Good evening, welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance's special meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 25th. It's 5:30 and I would like to call the meeting to order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is delegations where any member of the public could approach the Board of Finance on anything on our agenda, seeing that there is no one here. We'll move on to new business, the discussion and possible action of establishing the fund balance policy. So just, I think I'll start with a little bit of background the town has had of fund balance policy, but it hasn't been updated since about 2008. A lot of the verbiage in it was outdated and didn't incorporate some of either GAAP language or GASB language or best practices that Connecticut's GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, had put out. So we had started with the old fund balance policy. We decided that trying to rework it was too complicated and not the best way to go about it. So then Kevin Gervais and Lauren went out and looked at a number of towns in Connecticut and looked at what they had in place. And so Kevin proposed a new policy, distributed it to all of us. We all had a chance to put in our comments and edits. And then in an effort to make tonight's meeting a little bit more streamlined, I only had one written edits submitted from Rich. So I tried to walk through some of those and share all of those. So this brings us to this evening where we want to finalize this. We have confirmed with the first selectman and town attorney that it is our Board of Finance that's responsible for adopting it. It does not have to go to the Board of Selectmen for ratification or anything. So there, I think there's a, there's a couple of other things I just want to preface. So this is going to be both policy and procedure. And I know one of Rich's comments was that, you know, this should be sort of more, you know, a little bit more concise and not so detailed. But typically you would see in a policy something coming, you know, from a higher level. But the more I thought about that, I, I do like the idea of having it be more detailed because, you know, this is an elected body. You know, this isn't a body made up of all accountants or, you know, people with a degree in public administration or CPAs or what have you. So I think, you know, all of us can attest to coming in and that first year or so, still trying to understand what everything means and how things work and all of the different words that get, you know, thrown around at the table. So I think of this not just as a policy and a procedure, but also something that when a new Board of Finance member comes in, you know, we show them where the state statutes are, but we don't really give them a lot of detailed information. And so I think if we do adopt something that has more detailed information, it will be beneficial for everybody that comes after us. So, you know, I, I think that's one of the reasons why I went to the, the GFOA and their best practices for the fund balance. Now even this was something that came out in 2015. So, you know, clearly we, we needed to do some updating. So that was one of my first things. Let's put all of that in there so that everyone understands what the different terminology stands for. The other, I think, major thing that we need to determine here tonight is what target, either target balance or target range we want to set for, for this policy. And I, and I think that that's going to be the toughest decision for us. So I think I want to maybe open it up to everybody as to what their feeling is in regard to range versus a target. I'll, I'll start off just because I've been thinking about this a lot. I like the idea of setting that target of the 16.87 that our risk analysis had done or two months of, of budget, yeah, budget capital. So I think the reason I like that is it very clearly states this is where we want to get to. But if we have a range, then you have something that, what happens if we fall below that range? That's a policy exception. What are we going to do if we have a policy exception? So, you know, are we going to stop spending any money? Are we going to, you know, you've got to, if you have a policy that says something, you have to also then determine what are you going to do if you fall out of that policy? And I think that would be sort of a difficult thing to do. And I think it also, if you have that range and you've got a lower, you know, whether, you know, if it's saying 10 to 15 or 10 to 17, if that's your policy, why do you ever go above 10 if you're saying that that's permissible? So we know we want to get to that higher. And if, if the, if we set that lower range, I feel like, you know, there's, there's, would be some complacency. So that would be where I would hope we could get to tonight is setting not a range, but a target so that we can strive for it. We see over time how we have every year, I think I also sent around to everybody that the state document that they put out each, each year. And it shows how our unassigned fund balance has grown repeatedly from 2017 up to 2021, which is the last data that the state had. And, you know, that is what the rating agencies are going to look at. They're not necessarily looking at what does our policy say, you know? But I think if we keep striving for that number, then there will be benefits accrued to that. So I've spoken long enough. I'd like to maybe open it up to other opinions, discussion. Rich?
Yes, I, I know that you've streamlined us right to the target, but I'd still like to go back to, I may have used the terminology that we have used since I'd been on the board of Undesignated. I realize that's incorrect. But I think for clarification, I think unrestricted fund balance would better categorize this document or SOP or procedure or protocol. As it refers to what was mentioned in that guidance and is used for the calculation. I think it would make it much more clear as to what this, this document is addressing. And then the other aspect is you were asking about deletion of the first paragraph in the contingency section. My reason for wanting to delete that first paragraph was it was virtually identical to the second paragraph and I didn't see the need for the redundancy there. But now to the question that you're asking is I feel much more comfortable with the range. And if we fall below the range, then I think we really do need to take the remediation necessary in the budgeting process to get back within that range. You mentioned it could lead to complacency with a lower figure. That, well, why if you don't achieve that, why if you achieve that lower figure, do you strive to get to the other one? This one of having a target, you have no bottom figure. So again, where's the urgency to go for that? That's a target. I, I think a range also gives us a flexibility so that if we don't make the upper end of the, the range, so be it, but that we're still striving to get there. And I, I think there still needs to be a minimum. In the past, our, our goal was 15%. And looking through the guidance and the documentation, it seems as though the recommendations, and this I think should be in an executive summary, that you have two months expenses. And that's where that 16.67 came from. And so for me, I, I would be comfortable having a range of, I believe I had stated, 12 to 17% because to me getting into the decimal points when you have, you know, 70, 80 million dollar budgets gets a little bit inane. And it's a lot easier for me to work in whole numbers.
All right, so that's another opinion there. Do you guys feel like it's, it's helpful for us to focus on range versus target and sort of get that settled before going through and looking at other edits? Or do you want to go through the document line by line? Anyone?
I think the range versus target is sort of the key issue. I think that that needs to be resolved. And I guess I want to ask for some clarification. If the goal is, or the target is to 16.87%, and you're saying the range, which we've all talked about being less than that, up to that. Nobody's ever suggested going over that for reasons we understand. My question has been if we, and you touched on it and I'm more confused after you touched on it than I was before. So then I guess this is the part I want to clarify because this is what helped me understand it. If we fall short, if it's a target, if our target is 6.87 and we adopt that and we fall short of it with our budget, and this is what I was talking about the other day, what, does that mean we have to hit 6.87? And if we don't hit it, we start making deep budget cuts? And then, and then you touched on that with the range. And if we, so how does, I, I guess that's what I need to understand.
I guess I felt like target meant that, you know, this is what we're striving for.
Right.
It's not a, we have to be at this number regardless.
Okay.
So it's, this is what we're aiming for. This is the direction we're going in. This is where we would like to be.
And so a target then, if I'm understanding this and I'm just playing with the words, it's an acceptable range. If we said 10, and I'm just trying to understand the concepts. I, I'm not expressing an opinion. I'm trying to understand the concepts, okay? So if the target is this is where we want to be and our budget comes up 5% short, then we're 5% short. If we have a range and we come into the bottom of the range, are we saying that that's acceptable to be, say for example, 5% short? And I'm trying to understand that, how this is interpreted.
Yeah. You know, I, I think part of it is the practices in our finance department. I mean, our finance director knows, you know, where we're, what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And I think is going, you know, they're going to propose budgets that try to get there, but at the same time trying to balance all the other issues that are in front of the town in regard to taxes and, and, you know, what we want to show to the public. So I, I, I think I was just more concerned at, you know, when you have a policy with a hard and fast number of you can't go below this percentage, then you really have to say, okay, what happens then?
Right, and that's where you get into, you start laying people, you know, severe budget cuts.
Yeah, are we going to start laying people off?
And that's what, and I'm trying to understand if that applies to the target or does that apply to the range or neither?
Okay, if I can help Diane explain this to you. Her wording was strive to 16.87, okay? It didn't say you had to hit the target of 16.87. So it left it as a very fuzzy, vague concept purposely so that you wouldn't be restricted. And I just rounded the 16.87 to 17 because it's easier for me to work with whole numbers, okay? And Denise's opinion is that if you have a range, then you're locked in at the lower end. If you don't have a range, you're not locked into anything. And that's a concern that I have because when, previously when I got on to the board, we were down like 6 to 8%. And during our tenure, we brought it up to 15%. And then with this next year's budget being so large, it dropped the percentage. And also for us using money to offset tax increases. So I don't want to get us back to the point of 6% because if we just strive towards a 16.87, we have the very real risk that we could slip. And I, I think we need, you know, I, I thought going down as far as 12%, we're still fairly comfortable, but I'd never want to see us get below that.
Well, I definitely appreciate the, the thought there because I definitely would not want to see us go below that either. I think, you know, part of my mindset is having been in banking for years, you know, we had a treasury policy that said, you know, if we broke any one of the, not targets, they were hard and fast, you can't have more than this percentage. You can't have a trade larger than this. And literally if we, if we violated that policy, there's a good chance we'd be fired. So I have that very strong background of if something happens and we violate the policy, there are immediate and, you know, consequential, you know, reactions to that. Consequences, I should say. So I think that's, that's where my mindset is.
So if I'm understanding this, again, I'm playing with the words, not the, the range is more restrictive than the target in terms of if we miss, if we come up short?
I, I think it's, it may be more restrictive, but it also has the domino effect of then we need to also document exactly what actions we're going to take.
If, if we don't hit it?
Yeah.
So if there's a, I'm just thinking out loud here, okay?
Yeah.
So if there's a target of 16.8% and we're at 15% for the next budget year, okay, that's what we're doing, but we're better than we were here before. Everything's fine. Millstone blows up, wipes out the town, we have to dip into this fund to do something. There's no consequence if we have a, and we drop down to 6%, okay? If we have a range, then you're saying that it would be further complicated because it would be violation of the policy. And then there would be some automatically things set in place that would have to happen.
Or there should be.
Yeah.
Otherwise, why have a policy if there's no?
Okay. Am I understanding this?
Yes.
Okay.
So can I just say a few things here? Funny, you say extreme events. The GFOA risk analysis template has extreme events right here. And I marked us as three, which is a little on the higher end due to the, or neutral. I guess I didn't take into account the giant nuclear power plant a mile across. But, so.
And that's kind of where I was going, because I did read that and I, and I was, you know, I should have said floods because it would be more.
So the minimum here, I mean, so the GFOA, the minimum recommendation is 16.6%. Based on the factors I put in here, we had 20%. If I changed this and said, okay, well, let's say the nuclear power plant is kind of, you know, it's right there, it shot us up 2%. So, so this, this kind of was where I was, you know, playing and saying, okay, well, what problems do we have here? This along with our rating agency report that they gave us a few months ago, where they said the downside scenario, they could potentially have to lower our rating due to weakening of available reserves. Really, it's us tapping into that use of fund balance every budget cycle. And that's, that, that's explained a little bit in this proposed document. Section D, I don't know what the original section is, subsection D, reaching and replenishing the unrestricted fund balance talks about how the town will grow the unassigned fund balance using leftover resources from the year before, half of that. So half of that money is available to be used for offsetting the next year's budget. And then the other half of that would go towards preserving the fund balance. Because as the town's budget grows, the fund balance inherently shrinks, right? Because it's a percentage of the budget. So this year we have an 86 million dollar budget. Next year, say we have a 90 million dollar budget. We still have, you know, 11, 12 million in the piggy bank. Well, 11, 12 million divided by 86 million is a greater number than 12 million divided by 90 million. So inherently, we have to grow that fund balance in the budget. So section B, I believe it is right here, talks about designating half a percent of the budget every year just to kind of.
Keep it.
Keep, yeah, keep building it in the event the, the nuclear reactor goes crazy.
I actually don't think if that happened, we'd be worried.
We wouldn't worry.
Right.
I think it's.
Well, that's an extreme example. I mean, let's face it, if that ever.
Yeah, the least we're going to worry about is.
Yeah, I mean, but I think the far more likely thing is that 100-year flood.
Flood, yeah.
Or we have a category, you know, we've done simulations at the emergency management center of what a category three hurricane hitting us would do. That's where we'd have to do it. And I think then, you know, you know you'll get a lot of federal assistance at some point in time, but right off the bat, you've got to, you've got to, you know.
And I understand, and I was kind of being tongue-in-cheek with the power plant.
Which brings us to our next issue that we'll talk about in a few months, coastal resiliency plan that we also need to do because that's also one of their, the S and P rating agencies' requests was to see something starting to work through the cycle of establishing coastal resiliency plan. And it started in the town of Branford and it's kind of spread along the shoreline. So they're looking for. No, what? No, it's, it's minimal. Yeah, it's minimal, but it's, they want you to start building it, start talking about it and building it.
So Kevin, would you also, you know, the fact that the GFOA risk analysis specifically states how to determine your target balance, does that imply that, you know, that they are suggesting a target as opposed to a range?
Correct, well, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure if we have a document like this, the rating agencies have a document and say, okay, where is the proximity to nuclear reactors? The shoreline, all these different, you know, external factors, extreme events, the revenue stability, every, you know, one of those, I'm sure the rating agencies have a more robust one of these. And that's how they're able to spit back at me and say, hey, you don't have a coastal resiliency plan, you don't have a fund balance plan, start working on these before next year, the rating might take a hit.
Yeah. And but just to be more specific, the fact that they're talking about a target and not establishing a range, is that meaningful?
Yeah, so it's a, yeah, so right here, it's, yeah, they do a target, they don't do a range. There are some towns I've seen do ranges. I'm sure Lauren, in your research, you saw some ranges. Every town is, every town has their own plan. There's no, you know, template for this. You'd think there'd be a template from GFOA, nice and easy, just plop it in. But every town's a little different.
Kevin, is there a direct relationship for that two-month reserve for expenses versus the increases in budget? Because the, the budget also includes capital and other things that some of those expenses could be put off if necessary that wouldn't necessarily work into a two-month budget of expenditures.
So the, the calculation right here, the assigned fund balance plus the unassigned over the budgeted revenues, that's operating. So that's the general fund. It doesn't really have, so since it's revenues, it doesn't have the, you know, the operating transfer out. So since, how do I explain this? So we have cash capital and bonded capital, right? Cash capital comes out of the general fund as an operating transfer out into that cash capital projects. That would show up here because we need to have revenues to cover that. Bonded capital would not show up in this calculation, right? So it's only the cash essentially for this. This doesn't take into account, you know, like a debt service or the debt load or anything like that. If that's kind of the gist of what I was getting out of that question.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, it's kind of almost a dog chasing its tail with increasing budgets that we're going to have to be socking away more and more and more and more money to have that two-month working.
Yes, a little bit there. But this, there's a few different areas of this that breaks down how we continue to build the, the fund balance. So this last sentence on page five here, target balance is, once the target balance is reached, if it were to fall below, the town will increase the contingency appropriation amount discussed by a half percent of the budget. So last year, we have, we had a contingency, right? We had that fuel and other contingency as well as the personnel contingency. This is talking about an additional contingency, right? It's almost like a catastrophic contingency kind of thing of half a percent of the budget. And, and, yeah, you know, the GFOA's best practice is 1% of contingency. They want a half of that for, to kind of build the fund balance. And God forbid, there was a, you know, some events you don't have to actually hit fund balance. Hopefully that 1% would be, or half a percent would be enough to kind of cover you so you didn't have to, you know, hit fund balance. That's kind of their thought there.
And I think that, that also, you know, it's always a huge red flag when you hit your fund balance or, you know.
That's a question. Every, every rating agency.
Yeah.
Did you go for an additional appropriation from your fund balance, right? Did you do a good job budgeting? We have not had, I have not had to say yes to that question because even though we do additional appropriations, it's for grants and things like that. It's never for, let's, let's whack the general fund fund balance for, you know, half a million bucks or something like that, which we would have had to do last year, you know, for that. Like, an example would have been if we need to do an additional appropriation of that 670,000, that would have been an additional appropriation that would have impacted our, you know, rating, our, our bond rating, so.
So Peter, do you have any more thoughts or questions on that?
Let other people talk.
Okay.
My thoughts, when I started this, I was, I mean, I'm trying to be, you know, Mr. Flexibility and I thought, you know, range would be, you know, appropriate. As I've been studying this more and I've reached out to, you know, my colleagues in the government world and about their, you know, what they're doing at their towns, as Lauren has done. And I got a little bit of the mix, you know, most of the target and some of the range. It was mostly targeted that I reached out to. And there was actually one person I talked to that started out with a range that went to a target. Part of the reasons outside what Denise had mentioned before is that we've gone through all this work to justify a target, what have you done to justify a range? And I was like, well, I haven't done anything. I just thought it to be a good idea. So it got me to thinking, now we got to go back and, you know, justify the two of, you know, the lower and the upper parts of that range. And then, and again, what do you do when you're, is it a hard, hard range or a soft range? Or, you know, can you break through it? You know, these are the questions I didn't think about. So I'm kind of going back to, you know, at this point here, I mean, as much as I think the 16.67, I think is a little too high. That this does, there is enough flexibility in here and, and in case of a hiccup somewhere or some unforeseen event, you know, like I said, it's not carbon and stone. We have, we can, it's still within our discretion to, you know.
We're not there yet.
Deplete the fund balance or. -deplete the fund balance, or, and go for, and as long as we still have the policy here to replenish it, if that, something like that happens, I know this past couple of years has been bumpy, and probably gonna get bumpier as we, as we go, go forward with the, the interest rates the way they are, as, as we start going out for our next debt, because I don't think the banks are gonna want to buy our, our bonds at the, you know, at the prices they have been for the past couple of years, they're probably gonna want a few more points added to that, so it's gonna be a little bit more challenging, so I, after that, I think, I'm, I'm inclined to, you know, to stay with the, with the targeted-
I have a question for Kevin. Over the years I've been on the board, the number I've heard over and over again that the bonding rating agencies are like fifteen percent, is that still the case?
No. So this is from our bonding rate, this is the, this is from S and P. This is the S and P rating agency report that we received two months ago, three months ago, July. So it's, it's three months old, it gives us our ratings here, and it goes through what, you know, what they're looking for. They're, they're looking for more, they're looking for sixteen point six seven. And that's rooted in that two months of working capital, so there's something behind it. I'm not really sure what that fifteen percent was based on, it's kind of like the Fed's two percent interest rate. I was listening to a podcast, apparently there's no backing of that two percent, it's just a, a number he, they plucked out of the air. There's no scientific backing for two percent. So I think that might have been similar to the fifteen, they're like, oh, fifteen's, you know, good number, it's over ten percent. But more recently, the GFOA established that risk analysis template, and they've really been pushing for fund balance policies, and that's why you're seeing more of that GF, I mean, the GFOA is the guy, you know, one of the guiding agencies for government finance officers, right? It's the National Government Finance Officer Association, and their recommendation is a minimum of sixteen point six seven percent, and consider adopting a reserve target somewhere higher than the GFOA minimum of seventeen to twenty-five percent. We're in that category, because we're at twenty-two, so we fall at the higher end of that range. They probably, if they did this analysis, and we did sixteen point six seven, they'd be like, okay, that's great, and then two years from now, they're gonna say, I want to see it twenty percent. So it, it all depends, I think, on the economy, the environment we're in, so, I mean-
There is a little bit, you know, in doing this, you know, you're kind of-
There's a little, there's a lot of this, you know, I mean, you know, so originally, when I came, when I filled this out, I said, three, we're neutral. And then we talked about the nuclear, the nuclear event over there, and we shot it up to, to five, so, you know, this changes, and it's really, you know, perspective, like my perspective versus your perspective might be different, because I'm, I live thirty miles from that nuclear power plant, but I work half a mile from it. So, so, you know, I mean, so this is an interpretive document, right? But as long as you have some, you know, basis on where you came to your, your numbers, right? Because Denise, I believe, did you fill this out too, and we came to slightly different numbers?
Yeah.
If I remember? So it is a little, it's a little interpretive, but that sixteen point six seven is really the GFOA pushing for towns to adopt that as a minimum. That would be their minimum, that's their floor, they'd like to see, so.
Okay, so the reason I asked that was, looking at a range, to me, the bond rating agencies are looking at, say, I'm gonna round it up to sixteen percent, and we have a range of twelve to seventeen, and they're saying, why would the town be slim, if we want sixteen percent, have a target of less than sixteen percent, like twelve, thirteen, fourteen? And how would that affect our, our bond rating? If they want sixteen, we come in at twelve or thirteen?
So already, I, I believe when we did this, the bond, the, the fund balance was at fourteen point nine seven, I presented to the bond council, or, the bond rating agency, and here, you know, their big thing is the use of the fund balance in your budget cycle, which the, the fund balance has some verbiage on, but they're really wanting to see sixteen point six seven. Anything less than that, I think, is like, hey, maybe you guys should go back and kind of look at that. I'm not quite sure about the range, like, if it's, if, if their number they're looking for is in that range, I, I haven't been questioned on a bond rating call about that, and so we'll see, it depends on what happens here.
Because I looked, the state put out a, a document of all the hundred and sixty-nine towns-
Okay.
And there were four towns, if I'm not mistaken, that had no reserve fund, they had no unassigned fund balance.
That's scary.
So, that's what they said, they said if it was a natural disaster near those towns or in those towns, they had no money to help them get, you know-
Yeah.
-finance a way out of it. The other towns, the other hundred and sixty, whatever towns, the average percentage was fourteen point six percent, but that was a little over two years ago. So now, I know it's gonna be higher today, as opposed to two years ago, so say it's probably right, right around that sixty percent. So to me, I'd rather have a target number that pretty close coincides in what they Going back to that fifteen percent, you know, my range, and I'm not saying I'd go along with it, would be fifteen to seventeen percent. So if you cut that right in the middle, we're back to sixteen percent. So to me, I'd rather have a solid number, a target, that they can look at and say, okay, they're trying to get to, to where we want to be. To be below fifteen to sixteen percent, you know, it seems like we're going backwards, why would we even want to go for twelve percent? If they want sixteen percent, which could ultimately affect our bond rating. So-
Yeah.
So-
Yeah.
So at the moment, I mean, I can be persuaded, but right now, I'd rather have a, a target that's around sixteen percent.
How about sixteen point six seven?
I could live with that.
Okay.
Or seventeen, for those round numbers.
That would be great, too.
Lauren? Yeah, so initially, I felt similarly to Paul, when Rich proposed the range, I thought it sounded flexible, and I think, Rich, your point, you know, making sure we never slip back to when we first started, I think, is important. However, after the conversations tonight, I do agree that a target allows us to strive for that, but then if there is something that happens, we do have a degree of flexibility or not having to outline, you know, a clear plan if we fall out of the range, which I do like. I also like that a target aligns with the GFOA. Just keeping consistent with that, I think, is a best practice. So I think I'm leaning that way, again, similar to John, I'm open-minded, but at this time, I think I prefer a target. Okay.
I'll, I'll make tonight easy. I, I have understood the target now, and in my mind, with what you just presented with your flexible calculations there, if we're gonna strive for something, I think maybe we need to go a little bit higher than the seventeen even. But I, I know I'm making you happy, I'm not making taxpayers or probably my board happy, but if we're striving towards something, I, I, the reason I'm thinking maybe a little bit higher is you're mentioning the half percent allocation to rebuild the unrestricted fund, and I'm just wondering, like, let's say you're at fourteen percent where we're at now, how long would it take with budgets increasing, let's call it four percent a year, to take a half percent to then add to? I, I don't, it'd be like our, our affordable housing, it'd be a, a target that we would never hit by putting a half percent in.
Yeah, it'd probably be a little ways out. I haven't done that calculation, but I could do it for you and show you guys.
Okay. But, but I, I'm okay with whatever figure we come up with, as long as it's in excess of that sixteen point eight seven or six seven, whichever the decimals are, and again, a preference for a whole number, so. And one last question, too, Kevin, is, is you and other town finance directors meet with the bonding agencies, how many are actually in compliance with that sixteen point, whatever it is?
That's a good question, I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Depends on the town.
Well, I know a lot of towns, in, in doing research, a lot of towns, and I'm sure Lauren, you could probably speak to this, a lot of towns are outdated, so I don't know how, what was the date, the last one here?
Two thousand and eight.
That sounds, I mean, a lot of them are probably older than that, if not right around then, because a lot of them had fund balances of eight to ten, eight to twelve, and then you look at the dates from twenty twelve. So I think this is, you know, ever-changing, I don't think it was always, I think fifteen was probably the guiding principle for ten, fifteen, twenty years, and then the GFOA started building out their, their resources and, you know, their-
Methodology.
-education side and everything like that.
Well, my, my question isn't what the policies are, but how many are in compliance with their fund balances matching that sixteen point, whatever?
I can look, there's probably something online, I can look at that. Well, also, an indicator would be how many triple-A rated towns and double-A rated towns are there? Because if they're not at that threshold, right, they're not, they're not up there, yes, you'd probably, you'd probably look at the DIRGs, right, the state Connecticut Department of Education things, all those DIRG As and DIRG Bs are probably all hitting their fund balance. If I was just a betting man, I, I'll, I could look into that.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, so then-
Yeah, I agree with, you know, if it's a target, that's making a whole number, too.
Okay. So do you think seventeen is that number, and also-
Well, you'd go much higher, because then you-
Yeah.
Well, the question is, when are we gonna review it?
Every three years.
Okay.
Well, and I will provide a-
Is that a best practice, or is that a three years? Because I was thinking, if you did it four, then that'd be, that aligns with a term on, on the board.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I agree, Paul.
So if we review it every three years, say, next year we have a monster hurricane, we need to put out two or three million dollars, there's nothing to say that we can't look at it then and replenish it with revenues that we don't expect that are coming in, like.
I think they're talking about just the actual policy itself. If the, if next year a hurricane, you know, we're not saying anything like that, if next year something happens, I'm not wishing that upon anybody, especially me doing the FEMA reporting.
This is just a normal housekeeping item, I mean, that-
Yeah, it would just be like, okay, it'll be an additional appropriate, you know, there'd probably be an emergency meeting, a couple of emergency meetings, and the funds would get moved, and then, once that's done, we'd work towards any, any natural disaster, FEMA's paying ninety percent these days, so really, it would just be like a, an amount of doing the reporting, things like that, to get our fund balance replenished, right? And then, you know, maybe the ten percent hit between the, what, what KERMA covers, or FEMA covers, versus what we'd have to pick up, we, we would talk about that at that given time.
Look how long it took to get the FEMA money.
So, before I left Brookfield, I had a pretty quick turnaround, I was the FEMA rep for Brookfield, and I don't know if you guys, in twenty eighteen, there was a macroburst, which is an upside-down hurricane, upside-down tornado, it was two point five million bucks, we got the money in eighteen months. So it took eighteen months, but we got the money in less than two years, so we could, we could turn around. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that, so.
Okay, so from that, what did we decide, a target of seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen sounds, okay.
Okay. All right, so, that sounds good. I wanna make sure we address-
Any thoughts on the three years or four years, or?
Um, I could, I, you know, it's been since two thousand and eight, we could probably do it in four years.
Four years with the term changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, somebody's gonna have to do it twice.
Right.
Yeah, and the numbers are being looked at every budget year-
Yes.
-to John's point.
Yeah. So we can change that to every four years.
You confirmed with seventeen? We have no replace all.
So then, um- So then my suggestion is kind of including some of the definitions in the background right from the GFOA guidelines.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with all of this, but I, I, still, for me, clarity, as it was referred to, both with the guidelines that you sent us the link to, as well as what's stated in the, the text here, to me, unrestricted fund balance really seems to be what we're talking about, unless I'm, like, way off base.
I, I think it is the, the main point, but I, I, because we also, through the course of our, you know, work on, on the Board of Finance, these other terms get thrown out, too. And so I thought defining it in here, at least, then, you know, I can, I just think people walking in, they may not know there's a GFOA best practice, they may not know that, you know, you can look to CCM, or, you know, it, it's like, you have to know what to look for in order to find it, so having that link right to and including that language, I think is, I'm just trying to make it easier for people who may not have that municipal background in, you know, the different types of funds that we have here, I just thought it, I'm just trying to make it easy for-
Okay, but, and that's why I, I'm thinking unrestricted fund balance, because that's what our calculation is for, and that's what we're setting the target for.
Right.
And I can't remember where it was, but, okay, committed fund balance, that very first bullet point on page four says, this is rarely reported in the general fund. We will not include committed fund balance in our calculation of target fund balance.
I'm sorry, so can you tell me, like, by-
Page four, the second bullet, it's actually like the third paragraph, standard impores, and then to determine, and then committed fund balance. And it gives the definitions of committed fund balance, assigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance, which then leads to the bottom of the page, assigned fund balance plus unassigned fund balance, as the numerator. But if the board disagrees, I, I'm okay.
Rich, where, where, I'm on page four, at the top, does, does the first bullet on yours say standard impores uses the unassigned fund balance?
Yes.
Okay, so where, where, I'm sorry, I was just not following you.
Okay.
Point it out.
And then the second bullet-
Yep, committed fund balance is used.
Committed fund balance, as user funds are set aside, highest level, duh, 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 duh. And then they say, because we're measuring and benchmarking our fund balance, for the purposes of financial flexibility and committed fund balance is not easily available for financial flexibility, we will not include committed fund balance in our calculation of target fund balance, so. But maybe I, I'm just missing something, so.
So, okay, so now that I read that, what, what was the question?
Well, I, I, I'm just wondering if instead of just making this apology about fund balance, that we make it unrestricted fund balance. In the past, our board had called it undesignated fund balance, which is incorrect. But I, I may be totally missing something.
Mistaken, there's three categories of unrestricted fund balances.
Yep.
Number one, committed fund balance, number two, assigned fund balance, and number three, unassigned fund balance.
Yep.
Those are unrestricted, all three are unrestricted, for the most part.
The first one is not unrestricted, that's why it's saying it's rarely reported, if I'm interpreting, let me just read it.
So, so your point, Rich, is just, you think that the title of the policy should just specify that?
Yeah, and wherever we use the verbiage, fund balance, we, I feel, we should- Yeah, and wherever we use the verbiage fund balance, we, I feel we should use unrestricted fund balance.
And so where it says like target fund balance, maybe swap target for undesigned, or undesigned target fund balance or something like that? Because I see target fund balance quite a bit in this document.
Target unrestricted fund balance.
Because we're taking two.
Because we're taking the assigned and the unassigned.
We're taking two classifications from the balance sheet, from, um, on the fund balance.
Yep, assigned and unassigned.
We have the assigned and the unassigned, and we should call it something, so.
Target.
What, target what, though? I guess that fund balance also includes all the others, you know, the restricted and the committed as well. It's just a, you know, I don't know if there's a.
So I guess that.
Unrestricted or undesigned or, or unrestricted doesn't, there isn't, that doesn't apply to anything else, does it? I, it's just our term for those two numbers, I think is what we're trying to do.
So, so that little, those three bullet points right there are really like definitions of those three? And they're telling you the first one's not in target and the bottom two are in target.
Right.
So if we want to name them something different, I can change it there and then after that in the document, we can change the name if you prefer. You see what I'm saying? I mean.
Right.
I don't want to say though, undesigned fund balance.
No, 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 I don't want to say that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because if you go to page five.
Yep.
And one, two, three paragraphs from the bottom, it's the second bullet up from the bottom.
Assigned half.
Assigned one half of any net budget for the year as, quote, unrestricted fund balance available for appropriation.
So that's separate, so that's separate from the assigned, unassigned and committed, right? Though that is a, a subcategory within the unrestricted fund balance.
Okay.
Right, so if you read that, what it's saying is the, um, the net budget surplus from the year before, half of that will go towards the, uh, uh, unrestricted fund balance available for appropriation. So do you know how, uh, last year we, we hit the fund balance for two million bucks, use of fund balance? That's what it's talking about? It's saying, we understand there might be a need for fund balance, but you're not just gonna be able to have unfettered access to the entire unassigned fund balance? I mean, it says, uh, there's also sentences that says, this isn't a rule, this is just a nice-to-have. But what it's saying is, you have to build this up and if you want to use part of your fund balance, here is this little pocket of cash. It caps out at one percent. So see what it says, until this assigned fund balance reaches one percent of the total, total annual budget, based on the latest approved budget. So if the, if it's a hundred million bucks, you can have a million bu- you know, a hundred million dollar budget, we could have a million dollars potentially sitting in there. Anything more than that will go to the unassigned fund balance, like the, the, the larger pot. So this also kind of has a little, um, uh, part of this policy caps, um, or well, has like a soft cap, I should say, on how much we can use fund balance from the prior years to offset a budget increase this year, right? That's kind of part of the, part of the goal there is to minimize using the piggy bank.
So we'd be out of compliance this last year by this.
Oh, yeah, last two years.
Yeah.
Um, the year before, we did one point three million, this year we're using two million. And the reason we're using two million this year is because we didn't use any of the one point three, we're rolling it over and then we added in over seven hundred. So, um, yeah, next, you know, so we'll see what happens next year.
Okay, so to answer the question, is unrestricted fund balance clearer than just saying fund balance? Is it inappropriate? Is it unnecessary?
I think it's kind of a question of how you want this written, right? Essentially, like, the GFOA is saying, they, they have specific terms, um, so they're calling it target fund balance, unrestricted, unassigned. So really, I guess the lingo, what lingo do we want to go with? I could change it in the document, I guess. Because the lingo I'd prefer is in the document. So if that kind of helps out at all.
Yeah, yeah. We, we leave that.
Well, yeah.
Okay, so one of my suggestions was to include that, that language that started off in, um, the GFOA document, to put that in, in the beginning of it, just to say, you know, here's what we're talking about and this is the, the use of the definitions of the different. So I'd like to include that, just to kind of set up the rest of the document, so.
That's fine.
Okay. And include that link right to the GFOA. And then I think the other, um, other things that we would just, I maybe need to tweak, because now that we've decided to go for a target of seventeen percent anywhere in here where we referred to a range, we would just need to, uh, change that to target. And then I think there's just like a couple of sentences that don't, um, you know, not material, but I think, you know, where, where we said something like, there were discussions of, I, I think we could tighten that up to just say, this policy addresses how we calculate revenue, this policy will address whatever, so. You know, nothing, nothing material, but just making it a little less folksy language or whatever, yeah.
So like this one, this policy strongly discourages?
Yeah. All right. So I think, I think we've addressed, hopefully, Rich, uh, for your, good with everything?
Yeah, I'm good. Just one, one last question, Kevin. Okay, if we're restricted for utilizing the fund balance to, how, how much is it that we can take out?
Well, the policy strongly discourages, but does not prohibit, the use of fund balance. So that's kind of a little caveat saying, hey, we understand you have this policy of only using one percent, but if you need to whack it, you can. I mean, this is the one right here, where it talks about the, you know, establishing the, uh, assigned, you know, that balance of one percent of the total budget to use to offset future budget. And then the next bullet says, strongly discourages it, but it's still there in case of an emergency, is what that's saying, really. So as long, when it is considered absolutely necessary, as long as it's not replacing operating revenues or covering operational costs. So it's what it's saying is, exigent circumstances, you know, extreme weather event, something like that.
Okay, so where we've been utilizing it to try to keep the mill rate down, that's a no-no for now on?
I think so. I think, yeah, that's how it's ver- that's how it's worded, that second sentence.
Yep.
When it's considered absolutely necessary, as long as it's not replacing operating revenues or covering operating costs.
Okay.
So.
But.
So.
And I think just back to my, uh, one of them was, uh, in regard to revenue, specifying, there are different acceptable methods of determining revenue, as opposed to some people do this and people do that.
Yep. So just so everyone knows, I interpret that as the general fund, right? This is always, you know, general fund, fund balance. So general fund revenues minus those other financing sources, such as the use of fund balance, um, use of bond premiums and things like that.
So then, I think we've covered everything. Can we feel like it's appropriate and everyone has the, um, knowledge to say, based upon our discussions and the paragraphs we're including, that we could vote to approve the policy as we've discussed? Or do you want to see a final copy before?
I'm, I'm good with this.
Yeah, I think we got the main points.
So the only change, I'm gonna do this document and I can send it out once I finish it, there's four sentences that have the word range in them. Um, I'm gonna swap the word range for target fund balance and.
And you're talking about the document.
Yeah, yeah, the word document, this word document, there's four sentences I must've missed that say range in them.
Yeah, but also, um, it's the document that includes all the language from the GFOA.
Correct, yep, 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 yep.
Okay.
I have seventeen percent in four years.
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
All right, does, um, anyone want to make a motion? Second to approve the fund balance policy.
As amended.
As amended, as discussed here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries six, zero, zero. Thank you, everybody. Public discussion, we have no public.
I'll move you adjourned.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.